All right, hi, everybody. The June tenth meeting of the Finance Committee to order, please. We have from the City Council, we have Jose Delgado, Mike Benton. Anybody else? All right, in the Finance Team, we have Kathy Bono and Pat and Steve and Lindsay, the crew.
Mr. Chair, we have Melvin Edwards as well.
And Melvin as well. How you doing, Mel? Oh, yeah, I see your name. Great, Melvin. All right, and we have the CPA people here, Bob and Karen, right? Thanks, everybody. Pat, you're the first item, April revenue versus expenditures. Okay, now take us there.
The April revenue versus expenditure report represents the first ten months of the fiscal year. You can see that our revenue is at seven hundred ninety-one point five million or eighty-seven percent of budget. Just to compare that to the same period last year, we were at seven hundred and twenty-nine point eight million and eighty-six percent of budget. On the expenditure side, we are at seven hundred and twenty-five point seven million or eighty percent of budget. And for the same period last year, we were at six hundred and seventy-five point two million and seventy-nine percent of budget. So it's trending pretty close to last year.
Any concerns?
No, we're looking good. I mean, the big driver is the interest earned on investments. And also, the motor vehicle excise is coming in much higher this year than it was last year. So those are two very good signs.
The numbers higher or they're coming, the numbers are coming in sooner?
No, the number's higher.
Numbers higher.
Yeah. I don't, I need to research that. We might have had more commitments this year, so that'll back next year's revenue. It's just the timing of when they send out the bills for people that, not the commitment one, but commitments out there for people that are buying cars throughout the year.
All right, good. Sounds good. Any, anybody have any comments on it, any questions?
No, that, that, just that part of the excise for me, that was something I had read some point last year. Always paying attention to what's going on nationally, and I read a bunch of different things. And so one of the things I did see was that, at least at the state side, but also nationally, that there are folks that are buying not as many cars. So to hear that the excise taxes higher, interesting for me. As I thought, I thought I read that starting to go down as people, one, was the impact of high interest rates, and folks are not buying cars. And so it's dropping, the values of cars are starting to drop. So that's really interesting to see that.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of years ago, you couldn't get a car.
Well, yeah.
You know.
Quite often, right?
Those people are just fixing their present car and making do with it. So, and you know, the older the car, the less we're gonna get in revenue.
All right, thanks, Counselor Delgado. Anybody else? All right, thanks. Oh, Chris, you're on the Finance Team. Sorry, forgot to mention that. All right, sounds good. Moving on to item two, Certified Free Cash to Stabilization Reserve, four point seven million. Wow.
So all that is is-
That's the Abbey Brook money.
Yeah, so what, what we want to do is until we've figured out all the funding sources and how much of free cash we have to use for Abbey Brook, we want to put that in a stabilization reserve account so that we can get at it between now and before they certify free cash for this fiscal year. So we, we can't spend it or give it, use it until we come back to you, but I need to put it into a stabilization reserve fund so that we can use it during the month of July and August if we need to.
Because if we don't do anything with it by the end of June.
It rolls into free cash for next year, but we can't use it until Pat Burns comes to and certifies the twenty-four free cash. So there'll be two or three months where we wouldn't be able to use it. So, and again, we have to come to you to ask to use it, but we're, that's why we're putting in a stabilization reserve account until we know more numbers on Abbey Brook.
Have there been any, any counselors or any other reasons, any people been chirping away about getting some of that free cash? Or are we satisfied that the request-
No, no, I mean, there, I'm sure there's other department heads would love to come in for projects. I haven't heard, you know, they haven't come to me. But if anything comes up, we want to make sure that money is set there. And we do have to raise Abbey Brook. We're looking at other, you know, the state, you know. I am, to be honest, I am, we are looking to see if it might be ARPA eligible, if at some point we have ARPA funds available. We're still waiting for those contracts to close out. So we're trying to do all, everything we can before we use free cash. But in order to have that money available during July and August, we need to put it into the stabilization reserve.
Sounds good. Sounds reasonable. Any questions, anybody? Any counselors out there with questions? Any Finance people? Any signolies out there with questions?
You better not have a question. I will not answer.
I can make stuff up.
And you can.
Nice place to put that, wasn't it?
Oh, he could.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Kathy. Next item, you asked for fiscal year twenty-three Certified Free Cash to fiscal year twenty-five Estimated Revenues.
That's the million dollars that the mayor promised for tax relief. During the budget hearing, he said to show good faith, he would put that million dollars right there until, and then we would revisit the topic when we go to set the tax rate. So that is us putting, him putting the million dollars aside like he promised.
So that's really, item two and three together, that means we have five point seven and free cash.
Right.
Is that what we have left right now, free cash? So that's the remaining.
That's it. So the million we're going, going to, we're asking you to put it toward estimated revenues for twenty-five, but the four point seven, we're asking just to put a stabilization reserve, and we'll come back to you when we want to use it.
So is their destination different? The four point seven going to the stabilization reserve fund? And the, the one million is going to fiscal year twenty-five estimated revenues? Okay. Both are protected?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? There are none. Moving on to item four, Police Department Personal Services, the Police Department Extra Detail Funds.
So the police outside detail account has a deficit. They, I think, we, they did a transfer back in FY thirteen.
Fourteen, as of very end of fourteen.
At the very end of fourteen to cover that deficit, and we're asking right now to move money from available cash in the Police Department salaries account to cover the deficit in the overtime revolving account. And the reason they run a deficit, not only for there are some, they don't collect everything, but the ten percent admin cost that's used to pay for the supervisors' salaries has to go to general fund revenue. So it is not put in that revolving account, and that was per Mass General Law. So it always runs in a deficit, it's going to run a deficit. We're now trying to catch up, and then every year at this time, we'll come back to you, and we'll, we'll raise the deficit so that we don't have it accumulating again.
But you said fourteen, did you mean fourteen, really?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ten years.
And that's why it's accumu, it's, it's up to four hundred and seventy thousand now. So we have to deal with it, and then we're gonna come back every year. But it's because the supervisors are paid out of that revolving account, but the revenue, the ten percent admin fee is, goes to general fund revenues. And then there's, if there's, you know, like certain, I know that when we have police out for the ARPA projects, we did, they don't charge city departments for the admin fee, so. So there's a deficit there for the salary. We're just trying to clear up the deficit. There's available funding in the personal services to do that.
Okay, thank you. Questions? No questions. Number five, Budget Transfer Across Departments, thirty-two thousand five hundred.
So that is from, there is a shortage in the City Council account. The salary projections shortage of twenty-five hundred. So we just did projections, and we're short twenty-five hundred dollars in the City Council for stipends that were given to the council staff. So they need twenty-five hundred out of reserve contingencies. And then the thirty thousand is to be transferred into Procurement's Advertising Line. And I know we came last week and asked for twenty-five, and we should have asked for more because we did, the calculation was wrong. So we are now gonna be spending, and we hit a budget a hundred and forty-five thousand, we think we're gonna be spending up to two hundred thousand in advertising. And this year, in twenty-three, they had two hundred and five bids. In twenty-four, they're gonna have two hundred and eighty-five bids. So the increase-
Still ARPA.
It's ARPA, ESCO, you know, and, and all the projects. I mean, you know, and sometimes, and Lawrence sat here during a budget hearing and said, sometimes they have to go out one or two times, not just once, two or three times to get bidders. And we, we encourage advertising, we encourage competition, so we will go out if we only have one. So it just, and we, you know, we didn't calculate right. We have to come back. So we're asking for another thirty thousand be transferred from reserved to her advertising line, and that should get us through.
That's in place of the twenty-five thousand.
No, it's on top of.
There's two, there's twenty-five thousand, and then there's the, the City Council.
So, but last week I asked, and you guys approved twenty-five thousand, now I'm asking you to approve another thirty. We should have just asked for like sixty, but we didn't. So our mistake, we should have asked for more.
Questions? Was there anyone else at?
You said this is coming from-
Reserve for contingencies.
And what's that?
That's a line item in the general fund budget. It started the year with two hundred and fifty thousand. And we've used forty thousand, went to the state assessments to pay the University of Mass for the Medicaid reimbursement they do on behalf of the school department. Forty-five thousand went to the Elections Department. As Kathy mentioned last week, twenty-five thousand went to procurement. And now we have the thirty-two thousand five hundred from tonight, so.
And this is fiscal year twenty-three?
Four.
Or twenty, excuse me, twenty-four, this, this fiscal year, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
So if this transfer is approved tonight, then we will have a remaining balance of a hundred and seven thousand five hundred.
For the rest of the fiscal year.
For the next couple of weeks. Chances are that won't get expended.
So what will we do with that?
It becomes part of free cash.
We can't move it anywhere. We want it to become part of free cash. Is that the best outcome, or is there?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, we've budgeted at two hundred and fifty for next year, so, you know, when July first starts, you'll have a new pot of money.
You just don't know.
Yeah, no, no, it makes sense as a contingency fund.
Exactly what it is, you know. All right, good. My guess is to the next section, which makes a lot of CPA stuff.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
There is an item that has been placed on the, on the agenda for the council that didn't make it onto this agenda for the, for the Finance Subcommittee.
Okay.
That I just wanted to bring up before you got into all the CPA stuff. We have an item on the budget for one point nine three three million dollars for a bond for Dwight Street. We received the Gaming Commission Award of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and the city matches two-thirds of the project cost, so we are looking to get approval on a bond tonight for one point nine three three million. It just didn't appear on your agenda for tonight, but it is on the council agenda.
Yeah, Kathy just showed it to me.
Yeah.
Can you explain it, what it is for?
Sure. We are redoing Dwight Street from Lyman Street all the way to State Street. It was part of a Gaming Commission Award for the city. We made application last year. The money was accepted by the council last year. The project is ready for construction. It is going out to bid this week. And the total cost is about two point nine million. The Gaming Commission is giving us one-third, and the city has to come up with the two-thirds of it, which is the nine, one point nine three three million bond that is in front of you.
The nine sixty-six is one-third of two point nine million.
Correct, yeah, that's then the Gaming Commission. Up until that time on construction, they would only give us one-third. And we've probably done four or five big construction projects with them, and this is the next step to redo the corridor of Dwight Street.
This is over and above your regular three million dollars you spend on.
Correct, yeah, this is a, this was an award through the Gaming Commission. And we were, because the timing of what we got last year, it had to go through design, and the design is ready to go now. So hence the reason we're in front of you now.
Okay. But is that, can you handle that capacity wise?
Excuse me, counselor?
Can you handle that capacity wise? Is that something your staff to do?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had, it was designed, we had a consultant design it. We went out for qualifications for a consultant. They've designed it, it's been reviewed and ready to go out to construction. A lot of our ARPA stuff from last year is, is going away, so I have the capacity for managing it and inspecting it as we move forward.
Okay, and so will we see Dwight Street during this year?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna be starting construction this year, and it's coordinated with the construction of the parking garage at the Mass Mutual Center as well. So we're, I think the bid opening is scheduled for the twenty-eighth of June, so we would be starting construction probably mid-July.
Right, that sounds good. It's kind of spiffy, huh? Dwight Street, no garage. It's good.
It's gonna be a nice corridor, so I hope.
Chris, this is just, you're just paving over Dwight Street. Is there any, like, significant improvements? I know in the past, we've talked about, like, studying, you know, potential changing of the one-way to two-way. This is just straight repaving and beautifying it again.
Well, this, yeah, it, it's, it's more than repaving because we're doing a lot of bump outs, we're doing modified parking. We are reducing, right now, when you drive down Dwight Street, there's three lanes. We're reducing it to two, adding bike lanes, adding in a lot more trees throughout the entire corridor, new sidewalks, and as I said, as well as bump outs and everything like that, and coordinating it with the entrance for the parking garage. The parking garage entrance on the old garage used to be on Bruce Landon Way and on Harrison. The entrance to Harrison is saying, but the new entrance to the garage is gonna be on Dwight Street. I shouldn't say the new entrance, one of the two entrances is gonna be on Dwight Street. So this is coordinating with it as well. So it's not just the paving, it's, it's bump outs, new curbs, new sidewalks, as well as a lot of new trees that are going into the corridor, and new bike lanes all up and down Dwight Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else with a question? Counselors or anybody else? Okay, thanks, Chris.
You're very welcome.
Moving right along to CPA. So somebody got the item of the CPA budget itself? Is that you, Kathy, or is that Bob gonna do that?
It's Bob. So, you know, every year, we have to set a budget for the new fiscal year. And estimated CPA revenues for fiscal twenty-five is two million six hundred and sixty-one thousand. Every year, we then have to set aside ten percent of that for community housing, historic resources, and open space. Every year, we can take up to five percent of that for administration, but we've yet to do that. Our administrative budget is seventy-nine thousand four hundred, leaving one million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred in the unallocated reserves. But the bottom line is six million two hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Is what?
Is, is the total revenue.
Could you just repeat that number again?
Two million six hundred sixty-one thousand.
Sound good? Kathy in Finance Team, you guys, this is totally separate from anything you guys do or what, right?
I work with Bob and Karen.
Yeah. That is helpful in giving us estimates as to what we should think we might be getting. And sadly, I would just add that, you know, the state distribution is significantly down this coming year. The state gets its money from fees paid at all deed transfers at registries across the Commonwealth. And because the real estate market has slowed down, the fees going into the trust fund that the state divvies up once a year in November to all CPA communities is significantly down. And the Department of Revenue has cautioned all of the CPA communities to use a very low average.
Hey, have you, have you done that?
That's what we've done.
Okay.
It was what they told.
There's some, some other people do what they told. That's good.
Yeah.
Good to have a few. That's good. So do you want, so that's the budget, the overall budget? Sounds like Pat's in sync with you on that. And are you gonna walk through each of the projects here briefly?
We will. People should have gotten one of these.
Do you have one? Here, why don't you take this one? There will be a slideshow or presentation, and I think you have those copies in your box, but you have a digital copy.
So, so we're gonna, when you say there will be one, we're gonna do it during the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So what we're gonna do now is a briefer kind of description of each one, because we're gonna get the whole enchilada in there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can do a little briefer here.
Yeah.
Sounds lovely.
So the, the first of the recommendations is to the former Indian Orchard Fire Station. As you know, the city's in the process of renovating that into a community center. City Council approved two hundred and fifty thousand of CPA last year that when, that is going for exterior repairs. And this year, the Indian Orchard Council and the city returned and asked for money to go toward the elevator. And it's a recommendation of three hundred thousand.
Now that will be combined with the two fifty from last year.
Correct, and the city's already put some ARPA money into it, but there's still, there's still a lot of fundraising that has to be done.
Sounds good.
The second is the Historic Homes Restoration Program, which is run by the Community Preservation Committee. City Council approved it about maybe three or four years ago. It is for owner occupants in Springfield's local historic districts, and they are chosen by lottery. And the CPA funds can help with basically anything exterior, new roofs, repair of chimneys, carpentry repairs, window repairs. And this, once again, is three hundred thousand. Just, just so you know, the committee has a policy that we don't give more than three hundred thousand. For, for six years, it was two hundred and fifty.
I was gonna say, it was two fifty.
Correct, but then someone brought to our attention that we hadn't raised it, and inflation had gone up. So we went online to see what two hundred and fifty thousand would be in current money, and it was about three hundred. So the maximum that we recommend to anyone is three hundred, and come back and see us next year if you need more, or find it elsewhere.
Like the Indian Orchard.
Fire Station, correct.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
The third project is the Van Sickle Softball Diamond. We received an application from the Old Timer Softball League in conjunction with the Park Department. They extensively use that, and it needs renovation. And we are recommending three hundred thousand dollars for improvements to the ball field.
Yeah, I've been to one of their games. They, they definitely use it.
How many diamonds back there? When I was there, I can only remember two.
They do it on like Saturdays, but it's a bunch of folks, they're usually old, you know, they're older, you know.
But is there one diamond back there or two, do you remember?
Maybe one.
One, yeah, yeah. And, and interestingly, the athletic fields are on a mishmash of ownership. Some of it is on land owned by the school department, and others are in land owned by the housing authority. When CPA gives money, it has to be to protected recreational space. So the parks folks are working with the school department and the housing authority to have the land that makes up this play, playfield transferred to park care, so it'll be protected under, was it, Chapter Article Ninety-seven?
Well, that's good. That's nice. You get the people a better diamond. That's nice. Right?
The next one, it was a request from the, from the Office of Disaster Recovery for rehabilitation incentives for the vacant deteriorated row houses which the city owns at one seventy-four, one seventy-six Maple Street.
The five that are right there at the corner.
There are six at the corner. The two that are furthest from the corner are city-owned. And the city had sold them to a developer who was, had gotten control of the other four, and then never performed to the satisfaction of the city. So they took back the two ones that had been city tax foreclosed, and they now want to put them out for a request for proposals. The buildings are in deplorable condition. The one furthest from the corner had a horrendous fire sometime in the last year, so it's in really bad condition. And so the CPA money will be attached to the RFP in hopes of enticing a qualified developer to be interested in them.
I thought we had one at one point. I don't wanna use his name, but.
We did, we did. He failed to perform to the city standards. The city took back the two buildings that they owned, and he has then sold the other four to a new developer who wants to fix them, and that will be the next recommendation we come to. So this one is three hundred thousand to the two that are owned by the city in order to find the developer, and, you know, enable to use their money then for exterior renovation. The next renovation is three hundred thousand, and it's for the remainder of those row houses that are now owned by a new corporate entity with, with plans to do the same renovation that the previous developer wanted to do. Supposedly, each one of these row houses, all six, will be divided into three apartments. So if this comes to fruition, there will be eighteen new rental units that we haven't seen for quite some time in these buildings.
It'd be nice right around the corner from the Gemini site, getting me developed.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
The next one is also from the Office of Disaster Recovery. The city owns an unusual modernist house at sixty Buyer Street.
Oh, yeah, that Frank Lloyd, right, yeah.
Sort of Frank Lloyd Wrightish house. It's also in terrible condition. And we are recommending three hundred thousand that will be attached to an RFP that will go out in hopes of attracting a developer, and that developer then gets to use the money toward exterior renovation of the building, which also has had a fire.
Lucky we have some CPA money to help out here.
Yes.
That's, that sounds unfortunate, but it's good we have the money to try to do it. All right, any questions from anybody as we go along here? Okay. The more Museum of Fine Arts.
That's right. This is the third phase of CPA assistance. In, in the first year, which City Council approved, they used it to restore the monumental entryway to the art museum off the quadrangle. And, and if you haven't been up there recently, go up there. It came out fabulously. And the, the other of that allocation was for new windows on the Chestnut Street facade, and they're just going in now. Everything takes time. Last year was for windows on one of the sides of the building, and this is to continue the window replacement and chemically cleaning. So listen, this should be the final phase of recommendations. At the conclusion, the door will have been fixed, all of the windows will have been replaced, and the exterior of the building will have been cleaned, and we're recommending three hundred thousand.
And you think, if I heard you right, you think that this is the end of this? And you think, if I heard you right, you think that this is the end of this phase of the more.
That's what we've been told, so we hope, but you never know how, inflation, inflation.
Yes. All right, now to Saint John's.
Yes, the next one is a recommendation to the historic Saint John's Church. Um, it's a shingle building.
This is the, the old church.
Correct, the one on the corner, actually on the corner of Hancock and, and Union Street.
Right.
And, and for the community house, which is immediately behind the old church. And we're recommending three hundred thousand dollars for exterior work, which is primarily replacement of the wood shingles.
It's wood shingles.
It's wood shingles, and, and just to add, the state law that governs CPA um, requires that anytime CPA money is spent on a historic resource, that work has to comply with what's called the Secretary of the Stan, Secretary of the Interior Standards, um, which are the gold standards for historic preservation. So, for example, if Saint John's had come in and said they wanted to put up vinyl shakes on the church, that would not have met the secretary's standards. And we hire through our administrative budget, uh, a consultant from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission who is trained in, in historic preservation and interprets the secretary's standards for each one of our projects to make sure that the work being done complies. And so this is a three hundred thousand dollar recommendation. The next is, um, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar recommendation for improvements to Treetop Park, which is out in the, um, Outer Belt neighborhood.
Those of you who haven't been there, take a ride on Corcoran Boulevard and bring you to it.
Yeah, you don't even know it's back there. Yeah, the first time I went to find it, I'm like, wait, I thought I was lost.
Yeah. Um, I guess, uh, with some words from Walter Gould, uh, he wanted to be here tonight, either at this or at the other meeting. And he can't, um, because Outer Belt is meeting tonight. And, so, so I'm just putting in a word for him that he wanted to be here, and he's happy that this has been approved.
Is it?
It's been recommended.
So being recommended, made the list.
Yeah.
Didn't make the list last year, so he's got a little bounce in his step.
Good. All right, the next recommendation is, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, to the Department of Parks Buildings and Recreational Management who's partnering with the McKnight Neighborhood Council to restore the small triangle on Bay Street and Clarendon Street in the McKnight Historic District.
Nice.
Now, the fountain has not been working for years, so it'll be nice to have it fixed.
Get all the fountains fixed now.
Slowly.
We were at one Saturday night, the, what was that Florentine? Jose and I were there.
City of Fountains, that's what we're.
Yeah, I think maybe in East Forest Park and Outer Belt, I'm gonna talk to them about building a fountain with some CPA money. We don't have one to fix, I don't think.
All right.
That's great.
Um, the next one is a sixty thousand dollar recommendation to help the drama studio add an elevator for handicapped accessibility to their historic building. They are applying for a grant from the, um, Massachusetts Cultural Council um, Cultural Facilities Program. They asked for sixty thousand for us, the cost of the elevator is far, is far more than that. And, and just as a reminder, council has approved CPA to the drama studio which occupies the former, um, All Saints Church, a historic resource on Oakland Street. It has helped them with, um, fire suppression systems and with exterior renovations to the windows and the stucco.
Okay.
The next one is the Invasive Plant Control Program run by Regreen Springfield. I think this is the third time we have recommended this program. You know, our conservation areas in our parkland have a variety of non-native species that are dangerous to the others, the native species. The, the most egregious is Japanese knotweed, which is in the bamboo family and is very prolific and spreads greatly. It was planted decades ago during, I think, the Victorian era, because it has pretty flowers in the autumn. And it has spread in its, in many places, so they, they have been using methods to get rid of it, and they have eliminated it from several of our parks and conservation areas. So it can't take hold, but there's still a lot more work to do.
So that, obviously, it must fit one of your three categories, historic housing and.
So, so what we can do is, we can preserve open space and recreational land, and this is preserving it, because you're in a sense wiping out something that endangers it. So yes, it's a, it's eligible under open space and outdoor recreation under the cata, under the verb of preserve.
Okay. Done your homework, it's good.
Always we, Mr. CPA.
Yeah.
Mr. CPA.
Um, the next one is, is a recommendation of thirty-five thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars to the Colony Hills Neighborhood Association, um, to, um, restore some of the decorative streetlights that are in the Springfield portion of the neighborhood. And you can see that there's a little photograph of what the streetlight was. You know, this neighborhood was laid out in the nineteen twenties by the Olmstead Brothers. And, and so the curving streets and these decorative lights are, are part of the character of the neighborhood.
Nice.
And then the last recommendation is thirteen thousand dollars to, for Regreen Springfield to be doing some work to add back trees to a small triangle, um, called Glenwood Terrace, um, which is more or less off of Dickinson Street. Um, over the years, trees have been cut down and not replaced. And so, uh, this little park, um, needs refurbishment.
That's great. That it?
That's it.
Two point six, 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 one million or something?
Well, there's like seventy thousand we didn't tell you.
That's how I run my budget too, I was always seventy. Um, all right, any questions, Melvin, I'll see, Melvin's there, Jose, anybody?
No, I was just excited to see the, the different projects, and many of them touch areas that I've, I mean, I I've lived all over the city, so.
I'm with you, it's like memory lane.
Yeah, so it's like the.
I've worked at the Indian Orchard Fire, the fire station.
I mean, that building's been vacant for like ever, and that's getting some life back is awesome, and just seeing the work on Maple Street. And, uh, so now this, this is awesome.
The great program, you guys do a great job of looking out for the city and, and giving spirit to this whole thing, because it really is awesome to see, to list the fourteen projects and others behind, probably behind it. So nice job, it's really nice, well done. Um, gives us pride, gives me pride, thinking about fixing up the city as, but it would look like it should look. Um. Are we done with the agenda?
Okay, hold on a sec, give me, let me call you back in five minutes.
Hello?
You.
Um, all right, so what time is it, are we getting near the?
It is.
So we got a little time, um, all right, thank you very much, we'll see you all shortly in here. You wanna do a motion, Melvin, on, on the items?
Make a motion to approve the items for agenda, including the, uh, recommendations of the CPA.
Oh, good, I second that. Melvin, did you hear that?
Yes, yes, I'm back, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Um.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, are you, are you with me now, or I'm not sure?
Just hold.
Yep.
All right, well, good meeting, thank you, it should be, it should be fun tonight to have these projects begin discussing with the council, so.